Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment Successor Agency, Callexico Financing Authority Planning Commission Special Meeting. Meeting is now in session. It's 6:08 PM. Call to order at 6:08 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Present.
Diana Nurucumbo, Mayor.
Present.
Victor Legaspi, Mayor Portem.
Present.
Lisa Tailanda, Councilmember.
Here.
Adriana Marquez, Councilmember.
Present.
Lorenzo Carradone, Councilmember. Not here. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Me begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we don't have one yet. Okay. Close session announcements?
We have no close session announcements today.
Okay, thank you. Do we have approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to table... Item number three. We've recently received information from the public and I'd like an opportunity to review that information.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, so we're going to approve the agenda and without item number three. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Diana Nurucumbo?
Yes.
Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Lisa Tailanda?
Yes.
Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Okay. We are now at public comments. I did want to state, since we have tabled item number three, that if anybody was here to speak on item number three, you can do it during public comments. City Attorney, can you read the public comments?
Correct. This will be time to place to address accounts on specific agenda items only. The City Park will recognize you when you come to the microphone. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal slanderous remarks. The City Council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have... Public comments are limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. If additional time is required for public comments, it will be heard towards the end of the meeting after discussion and potential action items. It is now 6:11 PM, so public comments would end at 6:40 PM. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have one for the item that was tabled, item number three. From...
Can we allow it? Since they're here?
You could... I mean, I guess you could. I mean, technically, it's not on the agenda and they could wait for the next meeting, but if they're here and they want to make their comments, you could take them.
I believe since they, you know, made the trip, we should allow it.
Yeah, if they're here.
Okay. So can you call the person up?
Ramon Cornejo?
Good afternoon, Members of the Assembly and Public. There isn't for me to speak here. I already sent an email. Probably you have already read it. But I'm just going to say what I put into the email. My comments as expressed on so many occasions already at the council as follows. What special services provided by Callexico Council at La Jolla Palm to get levy on extra service payment? We are making a payment already on our homes already. Can we obtain reasons to get extra tax on our community? An extra service that will charge what percentage of utilization is because of La Jolla Palm service versus Callexico? Where is the money already obtained distributed in benefit of La Jolla Pumps? Who gets benefit of the money already obtained and distributed? Who is the responsible of the development for the project in which only help was made? Who audited that all members of La Jolla Pumps are making the payments? Is it a special treatment for neighbors of La Jolla Pumps that were sent for this tax payment? If the answer is yes, on what basis were made and why not all homes at La Jolla Pumps get the same benefits? Who these council are working for? The Callexico homeowners or the ones on the benefits of the pound? Why is the city is willing to protect the bond owners versus the homeowners who are not receiving nothing in exchange? I'm probably wrong, but provide details in order for not only this community to understand what is happening, but other entities in Callexico get in order to avoid confusion and create opinions without knowledge of the topic. I do appreciate your time and support to get this resolved at your earliest convenience and appreciate you can provide some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another public comment?
I have Yum Kim, but he doesn't have a...
A slip?
Like an item?
What item number?
Public comments?
Is it... But it has to... Since it's a special meeting, it has to be on one of the items that was on the agenda? Do you have an item number?
Well, then I... I'll put the... Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah. I have another public comment.
Okay.
Jose Vargas?
Good evening, all. Well, I'm thinking that you guys are beginning to learn about the failed CFD and that's why it was canceled for the agenda. But we would surely want to have this aggravation eased, you know, because we're encumbered with a $50 million bond and an unfail project. And... I know we are at your mercy because you are the agility body of the CFD. Like I said before, you know, you can dissolve this. I mean, you can study it and have it dissolved, you know, because I don't think there's any capacity by this city government that this project is going to be finished. It hasn't continued. It made matters worse when you sold some empty lots and some foundations to Martin Coyne. He made smaller houses. The city made things even worse. You're not going to get the funds to pay the CFDs. I mean, officially, since September 2019, the city officially has defaulted on servicing the bond. This has got to stop, you know? I mean, you are here because collective vote by the citizens of Callexico. So this is a problem of the whole city. If you need to, you know, to fix your budget, it belongs to everybody. Got to find a way for somehow to manage your budget, you know? And this previous city council has made mistakes. So we all are going to have to pay for it. If we have to pay for it, if you just dissolve it, maybe nobody has any teeth against you for being the agility body of the CFD. And, you know, that would be the end of the story, the end of the aggravation. You know, just why make us pay a $50 million bond on a few citizens of Callexico when the city has done all the mistakes? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any more public comment?
No more.
Okay. So we're now moving on to the consent agenda. Do you have motion to approve? I motion. Or actually, do we have any public comment on consent agenda? I'm sorry.
I don't.
Okay. Do I have motion to approve?
I motion.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Diana Nurucumbo?
Yes.
Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Lisa Tailanda?
Yes.
Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to discussion and potential action items. Item number four, annual budget resolution for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the public. Today, we need to consider adopting the resolution approving the City of Callexico's budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Objectives. Today's objectives are to respond to questions presented at the June 24 meeting, address any new questions from the council or the public, and consider the resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Salary and benefits versus prior year. In response to council's question, this slide compares total salary and benefit costs from fiscal year 24-25 to fiscal year 25-26. The fiscal year 24-25 projection is 26.8 million. CalPERS unfunded liability increased by about 421,000. This is a major upward pressure. However, we also saw meaningful savings such as 462,000 and reduced active medical insurance costs due to lower premiums. Workers' compensation costs decreased by 146,000 due to lower rates resulting from an improved claims history. We've adjusted the budgeted vacancy allowance to reflect ongoing position fills resulting in a 250,000 increase in the general fund, partially offset by an 80,000 reduction in enterprise funds for a net impact of 170,000. Minor adjustments totaled around 40,000. Net position reductions and changes in full-time equivalents resulted in about 360,000 in savings. Total fiscal year 25-26 salaries and benefits are estimated approximately 26.4 million, a slight decrease compared to last year despite cost pressures, thanks to savings and benefits and staffing adjustments.
In response to the questions of the municipal in relation to the investment of the funds, we have the funds of origin, the funds of destination, and the funds of general. We are talking about salaries and prestations of 2024-2025, which are 26,848,659. The responsibility of the CalPERS, 421,143. Reduction in medical insurance, 462,523. Reduction in labor compensation, 145,676. Reduction in vacancies, 170,000, and other 40,223.
Inner fund transfers. All the fiscal year 25-26 budgeted transfers are repeats from the prior fiscal year. The general fund will transfer 98,000 to the airport operating fund to help sustain operations that continue to be underfunded by current user fees. City Council has given direction to develop workout options to reduce the support in the future. Measure H sales tax transfers total 3.91 million and include a 2.9 million transfer to the general fund for public safety and recreational programs and a $999,750 transfer to the Measure H bond fund to meet debt service obligations for the Measure H bonds. The Measure H transfer for recreation is increased to fully fund the summer pool program since the ARPA swim allocation has been depleted. Water operations and capital program transfers total 1.5 million. A 126,350 transfer from water operations is allocated to the water debt service fund for bond repayment. An additional 678,635 from water development impact fees will support the water capital improvement program. Waste water operations and capital program transfers total 1.7 million. A 1.5 million from waste water operation goes to the waste water debt service fund for bond repayment. Another 207,289 supports the waste water capital improvement program. 326,528 from waste water impact fees also funds the waste water capital improvement program. The water and waste water capital transfers are sized to maintain a 50% reserve in the operating funds for the city's reserve policy.
As already mentioned, all the transfers of funds contemplated in the fiscal year 2025-2026 are a repeat of the fiscal year previous. The general transfer will be 98,000 to the operation of the airport to help support operations that continue to be sub-financed by the users. Transfer of the investment of the measure H, total 3.9 million. 3.9 million is allocated to the general program for public security and recreation. 999,750 dollars are transferred to the bonus of the measure H to comply with the obligations of the debt of these bonuses. Programs of operations and capital of water, total 1.5 million. 826,350 of operations of water are allocated to the services of water charges for bonuses. 678,635 are allocated to the improvement of capital of water. Programs of operations and capital of residual water are total 1.7 million. 1.15 million of operations of residual water are allocated to the services of water charges. 207,289 are allocated to the improvement of capital of residual water. In addition, 326,528 of impact of residual water are allocated to the improvement of capital.
Revenue methodology. Property tax. Revenue projections are based on Prop 13 formulas, which limit annual assessed value increases to 2% unless there's a change in ownership or new construction. Sales tax. Sales tax projections are prepared in collaboration with HDL, the city's sales tax consultant. HDL provides detailed data analysis and market trends to forecast expected sales tax performance by sector. Other taxes. Other local tax revenues such as franchise fees, transient occupancy tax, and business licenses are forecasted using multi-year historical trends. Adjustments are made for known changes such as rate changes or policy adjustments. Program revenues. The city analyzes historical trends for revenues and departments provide recommendations for operational changes and expected program activity for the upcoming fiscal year. Grants. Grant revenues are included based on executed agreements or approved funding awards.
We continue with the answers to the questions of the municipal on the methodology of the income. Methodology of the income. Imposts, predial proposition 13. The projections of income are based on the formula of proposition 13, which limits annual increases of the value of the catastrophe to 2%, except in cases of change of property or new construction. The taxidermist of the town has provided data of valuation of properties used to estimate the expected growth of income. Imposts on the sale. Consultant HDL for its English signatures. The projections of the investment are prepared in collaboration with HDL, the consultant of the city's investment. HDL provides detailed analysis of data and trends of the market to provide the expected performance of the investment in the sector. Other taxes. Historic trends. Income from other local taxes. For example, taxes on users of public services, tariffs of franchise, taxes of temporary occupation, are forecasted using historic plurianual trends. Adjustments are made based on known changes such as changes in operations and activity expected for the next year. Income from programs. Historic trends and departmental recommendations. Include income from services, permits, and departmental charges. Departments provide estimates based on historic performance, operations, and planned activities expected for the next year. Subventions. Conveniences. Income from subsidies include with base in conveniences executed or nominated for financing approvals. Include subsidies, speculative or pending in the budget until the formal approval.
Expenditure methodology. Salary. Salary projections are based on current MOUs with each bargaining unit. Projections include scheduled step increases and position control assumptions. Benefits. Benefit costs are calculated using information from the city's insurance broker and CalPERS projections. Projections include anticipated medical premium adjustments and updated unfunded liability costs. Operations. Operational budgets apply standard 5% consumer price index increase to account for inflationary pressures. Departmental input is used to identify critical service and maintenance needs. Capital projects. Projected costs for capital improvements are based on engineering estimates and internal departmental planning. Debt service. Debt service is projected according to established bond schedules and lease agreements. This includes both principal and interest obligations tied to prior financing decisions.
Methodology of the income. Salaries. MoU for its English signatures. The projections of salaries are based on the moos. Moos with each unit.
Entendimiento vigentes con cada unidad negociadora. Incluye aumentos programados por niveles y supuestos de control de plazas. Beneficios. Corredores de seguros y proyecciones de Calpres. Los costos de beneficios se calculan utilizando la información proporcionada por nuestros corredores de seguros. Y las proyecciones actuales, actuariales de Calpres. Incluye ajustes anticipados en las primas médicas y costos actualizados de pasivos no financiados. Operaciones. Incrementos del cinco por ciento de CPI por sus siglas en inglés y solo, solicitudes departamentales. Los presupuestos operativos aplican un aumento estándar de cinco por ciento basado en el índice principios del consumidor. CPI por sus siglas en inglés. Para cubrir presiones inflacionarias. Se utiliza la aportación de los departamentos para identificar necesidades críticas de servicio y mantenimiento. Proyectos de capital. Estimaciones de ingeniería y proyecciones departamentales. Los costos proyectados para mejoras del capital se basan en estimaciones de ingeniería y planeación interna de los departamentos. Esto asegura que el presupuesto de los proyectos refleje precios realistas de construcción y materiales. Servicio de deuda. Cronogramas de pagos de bonos y arrendamientos. El servicio de deuda se proyecta conforme a los cronogramas establecidos de amortización de bonos y acuerdos de arrendamiento. Esto incluye tanto las obligaciones de principal como de interés vinculadas a decisiones financieras previas.
Assembly Bill Five Sixty Two, Subsidy Disclosure. Assembly Bill Five Sixty Two requires public disclosure and reporting for economic development subsidies provided to private entities. However, this requirement does not apply in this case as the city of Caléxico owns and operates the airport directly. The proposed ninety-eight thousand general fund transfer presents internal operating support to a city enterprise fund. And is not intended to support or incentivize a private business or external party. Therefore, AB Five Sixty Two reporting requirements are not triggered.
Con respuesta tocante las preguntas del consejo municipal sobre el presupuesto, divulgación de subsidios. Conforme a la Asamblea Legislativa AB por sus siglas en inglés, cinco sesenta y dos. Asamblea Legislativa B, cinco sesenta y dos, divulgación de subsidios. La Asamblea Legislativa AB cinco sesenta y dos exige la divulgación pública y la elaboración de informes respecto a los subsidios. Para el desarrollo económico otorgados a entidades privadas. Sin embargo, la obligación de divulgación no compite con este caso. Ya que la ciudad de Caléxico es propietaria y opera directamente a el aeropuerto. Las transferencias se propone de noventa y ocho mil dólares desde el fondo general. Representa un subsidio interno a un fondo empresarial de la propia ciudad. Y no tiene como propósito apoyar ni incentivar a una empresa privada ni a una parte externa. Por lo tanto, no se activan los requisitos de informe establecidos por la AB quinientos sesenta y dos.
Budget Control and Monitoring. Budget Control. Salary and benefits are managed through full-time equivalent control and approved hiring processes. Operating expenses are governed by accounts payable budget checks to ensure, ensure spending remains within approved limits. Budget Monitoring. Quarterly General Ledger Review. Finance conducts an in-depth review every quarter to ensure financial activity aligns with the budget. Department Outreach to regularly engage departments to identify operational trends and emerging needs. Revised revenue and expenditure forecasts as new data becomes available. Use findings to inform financial strategy and propose adjustments to city council. And provide council with regular updates and presentations for transparency and accountability.
Control y seguimiento del presup, presupuestario. Control presupuestario. Los sueldos y beneficios se gestionan mediante el control de equivalentes de tiempo completo. FTE por sus siglas en inglés y los procesos de contratación aprobados. Los gastos operativos están sujetos a revisiones presupuestarias del área de cuentas por pagar. Para asegurar que el gasto se mantenga dentro de los límites autorizados. Sí, seguimientos presupuestarios. Revision trimestral del libro mayor. El departamento de finanzas realiza una revisión exhaustiva cada trimestre. Para asegurar que la actividad financiera esté alineada con el presupuesto. Comunicación con los departamentos. Se mantiene un contacto regular con los departamentos. Para indicar tendencias operativas y necesidades en desarrollo. Actualización de proyecciones. Se revisan las proyecciones de ingresos y egresos. Conforme se dispone de nuevos datos, recomendaciones. Los hallazgos se utilizan para informar la estrategia financiera y proponer ajustes al consejo municipal. Informes se proporcionan, actualizaciones y presentaciones periódicas de, al consejo. Para garantizar transparencia y rendición de cuentas.
Future Budget Process. In response to city's council input and requests regarding the budget process. I look forward to working with the new city manager to design a budget framework that best aligns with the council's, council's priorities. And enhances clarity, responsiveness and public trust.
A futuro, entonces, espero poder trabajar en conjunto con lo que es la alcaldesa de la ciudad. Para obtener lo que es confianza y avanzar.
Next, next slide please. Next steps. City Council. Tonight, tonight's primary action is to consider adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget resolution. Police. There are two items coming soon, one on the parking meter program and another one on the school resource officer. Both will need council input and direction. Public Works. Public work has two important items lined up. A review of water and wastewater rate strategies and a discussion on airport rates and other operating plan. Finance. After the budget is adopted, our focus shifts to closing out the current fiscal year. And getting ready to bring to council the first quarter budget report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Muy bien, esto da por concluida la presentación y con gusto responderé a cualquier pregunta.
Okay, may I approach from the gas? You don't have any questions? Councilmember Thailand.
So, and the next steps, um, airport rates and operating plan agenda item. That's not gonna be discussed today as requested?
We already had, we, we discussed the last meeting.
No, I wanted something official like formal, not just talking in like dates and what we're gonna do. An actual plan is what we requested. So that's not gonna be discussed?
No, I don't have it.
So, when would we anticipate having that back before us?
Because we have to do a public notification and it has to be fifteen days. It will probably be the first or the second meeting of August.
But, public notification for what?
For the plan of increasing the hangar lease fees.
Oh, no, no, but even before then, we should have a workshop so council could look at what's happening to that department, don't you think? Isn't that typical? Wouldn't that be best practice?
Before the leases, the other history that I have researched. It's just come to city council as a public hearing. Invite those who have leased the hangars and present the information to council. And then wait on the direction that they give us.
Okay, well, I think that we should be presented with what's going on with that department as I asked. We're subsidizing it completely because the revenues are twenty-five K and it takes almost five hundred thousand to run that department. So, it is much more than ninety-eight thousand dollars of a deficit. Just because we're already allocating four hundred, three hundred and some thousand to that department. It's not sustaining itself with the revenues coming in. So that needs to be discussed and reviewed. That's my ask. I hope the rest of the council would like to do a workshop to understand what is going on. And what the best solution would be, not just go and increase the rates right off the bat. Because I don't think that's gonna be enough. Is that proposed to be enough to cover the deficit?
The rates that we are, it's about, I think it was seventy to eighty thousand dollars that we're proposing.
Yeah, so, historically, this has been going on for what, four years? Last year was three years that it was in a deficit. This will be the fourth year?
It's the third year.
The third year. So, then last year it wasn't really three years? Last year it was two years?
It was fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four was a hundred and forty thousand. And then we have a projection for twenty-four, twenty-five of ninety-eight thousand and then we're projecting ninety-eight thousand for next fiscal year.
Was it ninety-eight thousand last year? I wanna say it was like in the hundred thousands last year when we were sitting on here.
It was, for the fiscal, the first, the first transfer that we ever did was a hundred and forty thousand.
And when was that then?
That was in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
And last year, what was the transfer?
What we're projecting at the end of this fiscal year is ninety-eight thousand. So last year was a hundred and forty thousand, last fiscal year.
But twenty-four, twenty-five, what's twenty-four, twenty-five?
We're projecting ninety-eight.
No, 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 for your.
But it's the same number. So for, for twenty-three, twenty-four is a hundred and forty. Twenty-four, twenty-five, ninety-eight and twenty-five, twenty-six, ninety-eight.
But is that the actual for twenty-four, twenty-five?
No, that's what we're projecting. So, once the fiscal year closes. Then we'll see the actual revenue coming in, the actual expenses coming in. And then that's what will determine what the actual amount will be. But ninety-eight thousand is our best estimate at this moment.
So you don't have any numbers close to it? When do you think you'll have the actuals?
Well, we have to close the fiscal year first. So right now, I mean, for example, right now, June thirty, Monday is the last deal of the fiscal year. So, we give departments two months more or less to still submit, um, bills and invoices. That are gonna be charged to the previous fiscal year. So once that happens and we get closer to closing the fiscal year, then we'll have a better number.
Okay, um, yeah, that, that needs to be taken care of and it should have been done in twenty-three, twenty-four, but here we are. So, I, I'd like a date of when we can get something back right now so I know when to expect it. Because that's very important. Because it's not just ninety-eight thousand, it's a whole, a whole department.
A date as to when we're gonna have a workshop or?
And when we can have a workshop, when we'll have a plan presented.
So, just for clarification, so you want a workshop of what we are next steps for it? Or do you want us to come in and request for an increase in the leases?
No, I want a workshop for options and next steps so we can fully analyze the department.
I think maybe we can work.
I think we can, yeah, we'll, we'll come up with something as soon as possible.
No, I would like a date. So if you're saying two months to close so we can get actuals. So, September, since we go dark in August?
I think September is.
Okay, first meeting in September. Sounds good. Thank you.
I think we should allow employees ample time to make that kind of decisions instead of putting them on the spot right now. Because I think right now we're just covering over the budget and we need to allow them that grace. We can't just expect them to spit out a number. We need to make sure that we're actually looking at dates and, and feasible things. And I understand what you're asking, but I just wanna make sure that we're on track on what we're asking and what we're doing here today.
Definitely. I think it's been clear. We've set a date, expectations as we should. And I think two months is sufficient time since they've been dealing with this item for quite a few years. So there's ideas and I think we can get it presented to us. So, with that said, I do have one more question. Not, not for your department. Thank you for your time. On here, there is, um, positions being moved around. Different funding and it's, this is for building. I, I don't know about the rest of the council members, but I, I get a lot of, um. Concerns regarding that department in terms of inspections.
Do you have a page number?
For that one, fourteen. And thirteen and fourteen. So, Mr. Coyne, can you give me some clarity? Because I'm trying to wrap my head around this budget. We're eliminating the building inspector position, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And it's being replaced with a planner?
Planner, yes.
To help the planning and building director? Meanwhile, we have one inspector and he takes vacations. And across the city inspections come to a halt. And we've known this for quite a while and we haven't fixed it. So, what's going on and what's going to happen when the inspection stop for two weeks? Because that's how they typically stop, correct? When he's out, yeah.
So, we have savings from the two positions that we're eliminating. The two part-time positions and we're moving that to professional services. And I'm gonna conduct a request for proposals so we can have on-call inspection services. Because we did have an issue a year ago where I think the previous director tried to recruit an inspector unsuccessfully. And so, this would allow us a little more flexibility and allow us to operate on an on-call basis. That way we, when we do have the need, we can have an inspector when there's people taking vacation. So that's the thought behind that, to have a on-call firm come in when we have that need.
And how, okay, and how quickly will that be done? What's the pipeline?
I have the RFP ready. I'm waiting for this budget to be adopted so I can put it out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I did send an email to the city manager and to finance. With a long list of comments and questions regarding the entire budget. So, I, I don't wanna take the entire time to ask them. But I do want all that information and then I'll make it public. So I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Marcus?
I have no questions. Okay, I have a question that I didn't have last time. But because of the item number three on today's agenda, it really sparked some interest. City attorney, if you could just inform the public about my no conflict in the situation. Since I'm a Hearthstone resident.
For the annual levy, this, for the, for the Hearthstone?
Well, because I'm gonna ask a Hearthstone question that has to do with the budget.
Correct. Well, for the actual annual levy, there is an exception under, under FPPC regulations. For the annual assessment of the levy, there is no conflict. For the setting up of the CFD, initially there would have been a conflict. However, after it's been set and the boundaries have been set, the annual levy that comes back, the FPPC has a regulation saying there's no conflict there.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question. If you go to page number one hundred and sixty-eight of the budget. So, it's talking about the Hearthstone CFD. When you submitted the report for item number three that got tabled. But, there's a section that says summary of delinquent special taxes. So you have seventeen years of delinquent special taxes and I'll just give you an example. So in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, you had eight hundred and sixty-five thousand delinquent. The following year, eight hundred and sixty-five. So I totaled all of those delinquencies and it totals ten point eight million dollars. That the city, that, that's delinquent, that the city hasn't collected. And then if you move, if you move to page item number ten, I'm sorry, go, go to item number, no. If you go on your agenda, on number three, the one that was tabled, that's where you get that information. So it's ten point eight million dollars that the city hasn't collected on delinquencies. And if you go to the same report, I'm going off of the report that this company puts out. What's their name? Well, the one the city pays, Copel and Gruber. On page ten of the same report. Covenant for judicial foreclosure. It says the city has covenanted to the bondholders of the bond that the city will honor about July first of each fiscal year. Compare the amount of special taxes levy to the district to the amount of special taxes received by the district. And will, within ninety days of such determination. Commence and diligently pursue judicial foreclosure proceedings against properties under common ownership. With delinquent special taxes in the aggregate of five thousand dollars or more. All properties with delinquent special taxes is the total amount of the delinquent taxes for the prior fiscal year. So it's talking about delinquencies. And then it says Copel and Gruber will. talking about delinquencies. And then it says, "Copel and Gruber will examine the records of the, of the county honor about July first of each fiscal year to determine the amount of delinquencies, and will assist in pursuing each delinquency." So my question to you is, in the past seventeen years, and the city has had ninety days, every fiscal year when it starts, to go after these delinquencies. So when you look at the budget, you have the assessments that you're getting, you have what you're paying, which is only going towards interest. Nothing's going to principal. So as the finance director, what are you doing to collect ten-point-eight million dollars of delinquencies, as this sets, this says that the city is supposed to be doing?
This company is, they do, and if you look at the, you look at the, its page towards the end, you'll see their collection report. They actually do, they do the billing of collections, and they do the rebuilding, rebuilding, rebuilding. So they are the ones doing, are the collection efforts. Now, what's happening is that we have the undeveloped, the owner of the undeveloped portion or parcel that is not paying because that company went bankrupt.
They haven't paid in seventeen years. So at what point does the city comply with that ninety-day covenant, and go in and, and foreclose those properties, so that maybe the city can sell them and pay off some of this debt?
I think that is a project that we need to start working towards. And I know that there was some conversations that we've had about starting to move that, to move that way.
We do have two judgments that were renewed at the end of last year for the two large properties there. I think the judgments value are about, the judgments are about eight million dollars on those. So those, those judgments were just renewed at the last year with the next step being that. But we've, we've discussed it in closed session.
Okay, so according to this report, and the city is following this report, so let's start following it now, if it hasn't done it in the past, and within ninety days. We would like a report to see what has been done on these parcels. I know that foreclosure attempts started, but thi- this is part of the budget. And I don't know, maybe you can explain to me if that interest is being collected, but is going nowhere? Because there's eight million dollars now in foreclosure, you said?
There's two, there's two judgments that we're just, we've just renewed at the end of last year. The actual amount is more like four, but once you add interest, it almost doubles to about eight million. It's on, and it's on the larger two parcels.
So that has to affect the interest that we're paying towards the bond, because it's gonna be a never-ending story. So we need to apply to the principal. And the city has an obligation and a fiduciary responsibility to come after these funds. And it's part of the budget, so that's why I'm bringing it up. So if we're gonna follow this to the T, then we've got ninety days. That's all I have. Mayor Prota, do you have anything?
No.
Councilmember Thailand?
Uh, no, not right now. Thank you.
Can we go to, do we have any public comment?
Good evening. And I, I'm glad to see regular size of the budget. It was so much missing, missing information. Now we have information fully, but some of the information, I believe they don't know how to do it, and all, they're just still hiding the money. Because City of Calaisco has capital improvements fund about hundred-seventy-seven million dollars. Include the bond money we, we got the bond, we didn't spend it. And time of the, so two thousand and eighteen, city had about forty million dollars, capital improvements, water and wastewater. And they insist, the city council, they issued the bond, fifteen million dollars, two thousand and twenty. They only spent about two million dollars. That's it. They don't do nothing. And then, the other one is, every year, city made about four million dollars profit, every year. They, probably what they're making, they're going into the, end of year, they're going into the capital improvements. So the capital improvement supposed to be growing. And the page two, they said enterprise of capital improvement only twenty million dollars. There's conflict of the same budget here. They have a water sewer, sixty-one million dollars capital improvement right now, for the running, for the budget. But they have a lot of the balance left over, over one million dollars we have. And city staff keep saying, "We don't have money, we don't have money." They keep, keep asking for the registered seller, registered water bill. There's something wrong. So what, what purpose made them to that? They weren't just waiting years to get the waiver down, so they can issue the bond again, so somebody making some commissions? What is going on here? Just like I was mentioning, like the delinquencies about the CFD, same things. The hours, city employees, or city manager, or council member, who get the benefit of this one? I really, I really like to request the council, put the budget, include the budget in here, investigation. It's not regular investigation, investigative forensic audit for the CFD bond, because a billion dollars ceremony is not there. City, city spent it suddenly wrongly, or somebody took it, because the money for the ceremony only have to spend with the CFD. La Jolla pump, they don't, they don't have it. They didn't spend, they cannot spend. And the water funds, I really ca- requesting the city council member, you wanna work job right, go investigate all the happening here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One more comment. Julio Rocha?
Good evening, members of the council and staff. How you doing? Well, I'm here just as a, being involved in the commission, in the finance department. We were going through the budget, and we noticed that we'd like to see a better breakdown on the budget. You know, because we see a lot of items there, but actually, it doesn't specify where was the money going to. So my recommendation to the council is do a better research, so you know, we can approve a good budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No more comments.
Okay. Does the council have anything else to add? Councilmember Thailand?
I do, I have a, I have a lot to add. But, and Carlos, I'm gonna bug you in a, in a second. There's, there's a lot of things that are going on in the, there's a lot of things that are going on in this budget that we have questions to, and weren't changed. I don't agree with, and I said it last year, and I'll say it again, we shouldn't be basing a budget off of something that we don't know if it's going to get adopted or not, which I'm referring to the water rates, and that has a big impact on how it skews the numbers. I, I don't agree with that methodology, and I said it last year. And I don't feel comfortable with the budget the way it's presented and having that in there, 'cause it's assumption-based. And then I don't think we've given direction to hear that again, but though it's, it's in the numbers, I don't agree with that. We didn't have budget workshops, just one. And now, today, we're supposed to make a decision on it. I don't, I don't agree with that. And then there's, there's a lot of things that, when approving this, are gonna have an impact. On-call professional services for building inspections are expensive. And I know we have a contractor in the front, and when you start doing on-call building inspections, it's the community who has to pay for them, because we don't know where the third party's gonna come from, and how much that's gonna charge. So now, the residents are taking a hit when we outsource those types of services. So I, and I have a lot of questions. I, I sent all my questions. I've been given a few days to look at a hundred and forty-four pages and dissect it. And I, I'm just gonna say, I, I think that maybe it'd be best to have one more workshop. I know we have an expectation to adopt the, the budget by a certain time. There are options, right? It's a continuing appropriations resolution, right? So can you talk about that option?
Generally, if you, if you don't adopt that budget by June thirtieth, the next option would be, you need to have an adopted budget, would be some sort of continuing budget resolution. Basically, we continue all the budget from this year to the next current year. You would be limited by whatever is in there. So if there's something that was not covered in the previous budget, then you just wouldn't be able to expand on it. You could limit that, but that wouldn't need to be adopted by, by June thirtieth.
So you can, you can approve it, and then supplement it, and then needs to be approved?
Well, you would essentially continue the budget that's in place right now to the next fiscal year, but anything that's not covered after June thirtieth would, could not be funded.
Okay. But what I'm asking is that you can, you can approve it and supplement it, so that we don't lose what is not being covered?
You, it's, it is a lot of work, once you start supplementing, 'cause you have to fi- I mean, so you could, I think the city did that, did do that a couple years ago. And it was, I mean, it did take a lot of work, 'cause there was only certain items that would be inappropriate. But if it's not covered in that continuing budget appropriations reso, then you can't spend those funds next year.
So if we don't approve it, we're gonna lose it?
Well, if you don't approve the budget, then the best you could do is have to bring back a resolution, where you do, where you're continuing to the current budget until you adopt the budget for next year, or a part of it. But that's, that would be the only alternative at that point in time.
That's all I have.
Could you also explain what other options, if it weren't to be approved tonight? In the future, it's just budget amendments, correct?
Correct. If you adopt the budget, you could always do budget amendments of limitation, so, yeah, I mean, it's not a, but it's, it's not, you could amend it. And if you notice throughout the year, items come up, and then we do a budget amendment, right? If it's an increase or decrease, then you, then you just have to adjust your funding for that. So you could do budget amendments throughout the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus? Nothing? Okay, I did have, I also have to express my disappointment on the way this budget was made. At the last meeting, I did mention that I would've preferred a zero-based budgeting methodology. Why? Because when you came on board, and I spoke to you, and I told you that my purpose of being here was not to maintain the status quo. We needed to change things in the city. And by you doing a budget, which is other, which is not only, so the zero-based budgeting would allow each department to justify every penny that they're asking for. And what you kinda did here is the same thing that has been done every year in the past. And that's what I was here. I came here to change that. When I spoke to you, when you came on board, I said, "You're the, you're the director. Look at each department, what they need." It doesn't allow, this type of budgeting, where you're just building years of allocations of each department, doesn't allow us, as a council, to grow or do different things as a city. So say, for example, I'll bring up the library. What if our intent was to, I don't know, do, provide more services there, or looked into building a bigger library like El Centro? But if you're doing the same allocation every year, you don't allow the council to look at each department differently every year. So we're not allowed to set policy to let some departments grow, because you can't just, every department put everything at the same department, and then let the other ones, you know, stay idle.
Madam Mayor, if I can have you just direct your comments generally more directly to the city manager versus a direct employee, as far as your dislikes?
Okay, so then, so you heard everything I said?
Yes.
Okay. So then, if you could let staff know that I personally, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this budget. And I think that it needs to be done differently. It needs to start from scratch every year. And, you know, that's just what I came here to do. Not to maintain the status quo, and this budget is all about that. So that's all I have.
I'd like to make a comment. Carla, you put a lot of work into it, and thank you for the long hours that you've done. And I think you did a good job, and we just, let's just continue forward. I know there's a lot of things that might need some changes, but other than that, you did good. Thank you, Carla, for your hard work and dedication.
Okay. Councilmember Thailand?
I have no other comment.
Okay. Councilmember Marcus, nothing?
Well, I am happy to see that it is, it is a balanced budget, especially right now with the situation that our state is in. We didn't have to eliminate any positions, and that, I think, is a big plus. I understand that requests were being made, but with the ways that our finance director was being pulled in the beginning of her coming in and working, I think that we need to take that into consideration. Also, the fact that if she put in a budget together, and we ask her to rearrange that whole budget in less than two days, I don't think that's, it's feasible. That's not something. Maybe it, it could be for next year. I could see that, but not within two days. And thank you for what you're doing.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, we have a second. So we're going to, roll call?
Diana Nurikumbo?
No.
Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Lisa Thailand?
No.
Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
So, so motion does not pass.
So I guess we have to set up another meeting?
Correct, yeah. If it's a two-two, there's no, there's no action taken.
All right. Moving on to the agenda. Without anything else, do we have a motion adjourned?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk? Yes.
Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Lisa Thailand?
Yes.
Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, meeting adjourned at seven oh nine PM.